Okay, I will call the April 6th, 2020 West Des Moines City Council Meeting to order, as most of you probably are aware, due to the state public health emergency declaration regarding COVID-19. The meeting tonight and the next until at least we can get back together will be conducted electronically pursuant to Iowa Code Section 8. And the proclamation that Governor Kim Reynolds stated March 19th of 2020. So with that, Ryan, you want to take the roll?
Yes. Hardman?
Present.
Hudson?
Present.
McKinney?
Here.
Trevillion?
Here.
Trimble?
Here.
That's five members present.
Ryan, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Your Honor.
I would move, I'd move approval of the agenda as distributed.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Five yes.
Okay, item two is citizen forum, which is a time for anyone participating in this meeting that would like to address the council on any item that's not part of public hearings, item six or new business, item seven.
And please make sure to unmute yourself if you're trying to speak.
Okay, here and known will go on to council, mayor, and city manager reports. Matt, why don't we start with you?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Okay, Renee?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor. We do have a couple of virtual meetings set forth, a special meeting for the library trustees tomorrow. And the Human Rights Commission will have its first virtual meeting on Thursday. And Costman, Matt and I had a very robust meeting today on planning and development, particularly around some issues with regard to some matters that we're going to put on hold until after COVID-19 to discuss more citizen input around this elevator shaft, accessibility, first floor, second floor, arrangement. So I appreciate Matt's involvement in today's meeting, and I think that we collaboratively worked on a solution that I think is beneficial for the residents there.
Okay, great. Kevin?
Nothing at this time.
Greg?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Russ?
Yeah, just a quick report on DART. DART has been affected by COVID-19, just like everybody else. We've seen about a 55% to 60% reduction in the number of people taking DART at this point in time. So we have implemented reduced service on DART, and we're about to head to Phase Two on reduced service. And it's going to impact some of our local routes here. Most of the local routes are still going to keep going, but I believe the 72, which is our loop, most of these routes are going to go to Saturday service, which means just a lot less frequent buses coming by. So there's going to be a little bit of disruption. We're going to be working with those people that are impacted by this. If for some reason they can't get to their job, or can't get to where they're needing to go, they can call into Dart Central Station, and we will arrange for some sort of a ride for them, whether that be, I think we're trying to figure out if we can do an Uber voucher, or if we just have an on-call driver that comes to pick them up. We don't anticipate a lot of people being put out as a result of this, because like I said, a lot of people have cut back and are not traveling, which is a good thing. There is one route, our Route 11, Kevin, in Valley Junction, I believe, which is going to be temporarily suspended. I did ask about that, just to make sure that the Valley Junction people have public transportation still available to them. And they assured me that they did. It just would have to be more circuitous than it normally is. So that will be temporarily suspended. And then, in addition, it's going to the Saturday, you know, less frequent bus stop schedule. Also, they're going to, they're going to cut back even more severely past 8:30 PM. So there will be some changes. If you hear some residents that might reach out to you, feel free to reach out to me, and I'll make sure that we get these people taken care of. But those are just some necessary cutbacks that we have to do, to keep everybody safe and to try to save some money as well, since we've had a lot less people riding. That's all for me, Your Honor.
Okay. I did, I actually did have one more thing to share, and I forgot to. My apologies. As the Liaison to Convention and Visitors Bureau, they wanted to start this year's budget committee process, and so they have seven people on the committee. And by virtue of responding to the email right away, I was pleased to be appointed to the CBB Budget Committee for this coming year. Mayor County is on the committee among a few other folks, and since West Des Moines is the biggest contributor to CBB, I'm happy to be on this committee, especially considering the decisions that are going to have to be made, considering what's going on in February, March, and April of this year. It's going to have some real financial implications. So I'll be on the front lines advocating for West Des Moines, but certainly also being able to share on the happenings there, because it's going to be, we'll just say, interesting for right now. But that's all I have to report.
Yeah, thank you for doing that, Greg. That's a, that's a key position. And as you and I talked, it will be fascinating for you. I'll leave it at that. Renee, did you have something else?
I did. I wanted to ask Costman, Trimble, are there furloughs at Dart that's happening, employee furloughs as a result of some of this? And are there furloughs at CBC? I'm just curious about what other companies are doing.
We, we have not done furloughs. We have, you know, certainly we got like, I think, 46 people who are, who are out, either because they are high risk, or they've got children at home. You know, we're trying to keep people paid for the people that are not currently working. I believe if they choose not to, they get 2/3 of their pay, following the federal guidelines there as well. And that's about it. We've got very limited drivers at this point in time. We've been in communication with the union, in negotiations with them, and they've been very good to work with. They've been very flexible, allowing, you know, different drivers, or for example, a driver that does maybe the paratransit to, to work and maybe do some of the other routes. And we're, we're rotating schedules, so everybody's still getting paid. It's just some are getting paid a little bit less. And the ones that, I think we're making a decision going forward, that the ones that still remain, that are still working, that are, that are getting these people where they need to go, we've got some things in place to make sure that the riders don't get too close to the drivers. There's a lot of anxiety about that, but the ones that are on right now, they've asked us to do some additional pay for them. So we're going to be paying them a little bit additional to keep them going. Hy-Vee and others are doing that same kind of thing. So we're, I think they'll be eligible, maybe $200 per paycheck for above and beyond pay for continuing to work. So nobody's been furloughed, nobody's been laid off at this point in time, and we're just trying to cut back expenses now as well. So cutting back these routes will help us with that, save on gas and other things.
Okay. Tom, any city manager report?
Just quickly, the city's still, EMS, fire, police are all out, ready to respond to any type of call. Dispatch is working, our city departments, a lot of people are working from, and they're, they're doing well. They're still in the process. We're just doing a little bit.
It's a hard time hearing, Tom, but I do have a question for Tom.
Go ahead, Greg.
Tom, in terms of actual, in terms of actual employees in City Hall working, is what, what, what percentage of employees are still in City Hall working in light of the social distancing?
It's probably down about 20%.
I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
20% are working in City Hall still.
He says, he says 20%, 20% are still working in City Hall. And that was the other thing I failed to mention about Dart. Not a lot of people are working at Dart Central, and we're looking at closing Dart Central Station. People still transfer there and relocate it outside. If they have to use the bathroom, they'll have to get permission by a security guard to come in. There you go, Tom.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's great. And I know that you're on that, Tom. But again, I just want to register, my thought is that the fewer people going into that City Hall, given where we're at, the better. If there is no need for them to, and they can work remotely, that's my posture, that's my stand. I'm sure you support that. So I know some people just feel like the place is going to cave down if they don't get to work and do their thing. But, you know, my posture is that the fewer the people in that building, the better, and that's, that's just where I think it should be.
Okay, item four is the consent agenda, item that any council member wants to pull off the consent agenda? Otherwise, I'd take a motion for all of them.
I move approval.
A second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, one I'd like to note is 4P, with that Clean Air Attainment Program funds, that will include every traffic signal in the city of West Des Moines. Will be part of that soft program, which I think is absolutely amazing, and so kudos, Tom, to you and Jim, Dan, and Brett and everything. All that's been, 5O Business, 5A is Manchester Village, 9076, Linda's Lane, rezone from unzoned to residential medium density, Stanbro Development LLC. It's an ordinance for the third reading, final adoption. There are no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration in the second.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Five yes.
I'm not hearing him, but if he read everything, then I'll.
His microphone.
Yeah, I can't hear him either.
Second. Ryan, your microphone's off when you were doing that.
My apologies, I was, I muted myself earlier.
Okay, so, yeah. All right, so approval of the second reading has been moved in second. At all in favor, please say aye.
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 Five yes.
Move wearing the third reading, adopting final form.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Five yes.
All right, item 5B, Amendment to City Code Title III, Business and Licensing, Chapter 2, Beer and Liquor Control. Modify the requirements of outdoor service areas. City initiated this also as an ordinance for the second, third reading. Final adoption.
Move consideration of the second reading.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, can I make a suggestion? I'm, I'm wondering here if, just a technical thing here. If, if we mute, if everybody at City Hall mutes their mics except for the ones that are talking, I'm wondering if that will cut down on reverberation. Because we're hearing a lot of echo and, see if that works, but anyway. No actual comment on the, on the ordinance itself.
Okay, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five yes, in ordinance amending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by many Title III, Business and Licensing, Chapter 2, Beer and Liquor Control, Section 7, Outdoor Service Areas.
Move approval to second reading.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Five yes.
Move wearing the third and adopting final form.
Second. Sorry about that.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five yes.
All right, item six, public hearings. Item 6A, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the amendment to City Code Title IX, Zoning. Chapter 3, General Zoning Provisions, exempt from general zoning regulations, city improvements which promote the public health, safety, and welfare, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
March 20th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
The Plan and Zoning Commission, by a vote of six yes, one was absent, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the ordinance amendment.
All right, so now would be the time for anyone participating to address the council on item 6A. All right, here and known, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This is an ordinance for the first reading, and there are no outstanding issues, and it's, and it came through the Development and Planning Council Committee.
Move consideration to first reading. Second.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five yes, in ordinance amending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by many Title IX, Zoning, Chapter 3, General Zoning Provisions, Section 3, Scope Modification and Exceptions.
Move approval first reading. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Five yes.
All right, item 6B, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the vacation of a portion of Boonville Road right of way, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
March 24th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that'd like to address the council on item 6B. All right, here and known, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have two items which we have to take separately. The first is the ordinance for the first reading, and it is noted that we got the correct right of way through the plating process, so we have what we need.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments on the ordinance? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Five yes, ordinance of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, vacating a portion of the Boonville Road right of way.
Move approval the first reading.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Five yes.
Item 2 is a resolution to approve the termination of public roadway easement and conveyance of a portion of the vacated Boonville Road.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five yes.
Item 6C, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the agreement for private development tax increment financing rebate, initiated by Junction House 329 LLC. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice?
March 27th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
None, Your Honor. All right, now would be the time to see. Okay, here and known, I'm clear the public hearing closed. It's a resolution to approve the agreement. There are no outstanding issues, and it's, and it came through Finance and Administration Council Committee.
I've got a question on this.
All right, why don't we get a motion second, and then we'll have questions.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, Kevin, question?
Yeah, this is with Junction House 329, but he's going to have retail on the bottom, which is going to be rental, I believe. So how does he guarantee there's going to be five full-time equivalent jobs? How does this pertain to this particular property?
This is Katie Hernandez on the, on Microsoft Teams. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. Um, he, the developer is guaranteeing the jobs on behalf of the tenant that's going to be located in the building.
Okay, so what happens though if the tenant moves out? Then how do you retain five jobs?
We would, we would work with the developer to, you know, we, we would give them a couple months to get a new tenant in that building. And then we would make sure that they're, they're in the, in compliance of the five minimum jobs that are required for this program.
Okay, so is this going to be a hard and fast two months, or what? I mean, is it going to be, you know, kind of an open-ended and it's staff's discretion, I guess, is the, how long it takes to get somebody in, or? I'm, I'm just a little, I don't know, a little confused on how, when you're renting someplace that you can, you know, a space that you can guarantee that you're going to have a tenant for 15 years and five full-time jobs.
So the, the good thing about this is it's a property tax rebate program. And so Kevin, if he doesn't comply, and he doesn't have those five full-time jobs, I mean, I'm sure he'll have some grace period, but we could clawback or stop the rebate, I believe, from occurring at that point in time. I believe we have clawback provisions. Maybe I'm wrong, Katie?
Nope, you're correct. There's a withholding provision in the, in the clawback definition. So we would be able to withhold payments if the jobs aren't there.
Okay, but how long of a grace period are you going to have? And where is this going to be, be written down hard and fast?
We, uh, we don't have it in the development agreement explicitly. Is that?
It needs to be.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's, it's somebody's discretion.
I think right now, Kevin, if he doesn't, if they don't have the jobs, they don't get the payment. So if he's going to run into a problem timeline, I think he's got to come back and ask to amend the agreement. Right now, there is no grace period, and if he doesn't have the jobs, he doesn't get the payment.
Okay.
So incumbent on him to come back and ask to amend the agreement.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Good night, Mayor. I have a question here, Matt. Katie, during our planning committee meeting this morning, there was some significant discussion about an ordinance and, and requiring or requiring elevator in a building. To your knowledge, this project that we're talking about here, are they no longer moving forward with an elevator building?
I'm not sure on that specific element of the project. If, if Lynn and someone in Development Services is on, maybe they can speak to that. Our department doesn't get too involved in the planning process.
Well, the way this is worded is, it says the project would include first-floor retail and 16 upper-story apartments, studio in one bedroom. It says nothing about ground-floor apartments.
Yep. This is Lynn, Tweet Director, Development Services. Matt, the ordinance question that we brought to you today has not gone out to anyone else. So anybody who's proceeding down the upper-story housing project right now would be under the assumption they have to meet ADA requirements, which is an access position on the lowest level of living. If that means second story, that means an elevator.
Okay, very good. I, thank you. I appreciate that. And that's consistent with, you know, my understanding based upon the residents' input that we heard this morning. I'm just, I'm glad to hear that, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments on 6C? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Five yes.
Item 6D, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the agreement for private development, upper-story housing program initiated by Junction House 329 LLC. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
March 27th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that'd like to address the city council on item 6D. All right, here and known, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This is a resolution to approve the agreement, and this also came through Finance and Administration Subcommittee.
Move approval of the agreement.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I just, you know, I think this is going to be a great project. It's, you know, with having the retail on the ground floor and having the upper-story housing. It's, it's, it's good to see that our economic development programs are working, and I really can't wait for this project to come to fruition. So I appreciate the investment of, I believe this is Mr. Cutler, right?
I think so. Yeah, and I have to concur, just because we're, we're really entering some unknown times. But if we get some more residents in Valley Junction, I just think it gives Valley Junction an even greater opportunity for success, so I'm very supportive.
Totally agree.
And all, all of them are going to be rented to households at or below the 80% area median income, so it helps some with our affordable housing situation.
Yeah, yeah, this is a great project.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Five yes.
6E, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the Mid-American Energy Rexplex General Construction, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
March 27th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, now would be the time for any in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6E. All right, here and known, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and maybe, Tom, you could help us with an explanation since the bid came in significantly higher than what the, you thought the estimates are, and you're, and staff still recommending they award it. Can you give us a little bit of background on that?
Yes, ATO was the low bidder, and the good news is ATO has also been doing steelwork in the buildings that are going up right now, as you see it. So their continuity will be very helpful in these two projects working together. We've, as you know, through this whole process, we've undergone, we've dealt with tariffs, we've dealt with now COVID and some other challenges. But we, we looked at all the, the difference, I mean, all the different options. We still came back to them because we think they can bring value and move this project forward, because it's important to get this project buttoned up and, and so it's not exposed to weather as, as the buildings are going up. And the other thing is the, the site work was a million dollars under, so we did gain some there. And from here on out, going down the final stretch, we'll be able to use the number of state bids for like turf and other materials, lights, and different aspects of the building. So I, this, there'll be lots more certainly in the numbers going forward, but we'd still would like to see, I mean, we still think this is the best move for the city.
All right, so we have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together. This came through the Public Services Council Subcommittee. Someone want to move in second the two resolutions and the motion, then we'll see if people have questions or comments.
Move approval.
Second.
Does anyone else have any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Five yes.
Item 6F, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the Mid-American Energy Rexplex Site Improvements, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
March 27th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that'd like to address this. All right, here and known, the bid actually came in a million dollars under the estimate.
Move approval.
Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Five yes.
All right, item 6G, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the 2020 HMA resurfacing program, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
March 27th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that'd like to address the city council on item 6G. All right, here and known, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, we have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together. This came through Public Services Council Committee as well, and I believe the traffic signal is now being dealt with under item 6J, and was pulled out of this contract.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I would just say, even though it's a different project, we save off six hundred thousand on this one too, so even though that Mid-American Energy, uh, Rexplex thing was a little higher, we're making up money all the time.
Okay, all in favor of six G, please say aye.
Aye.
Five yes.
Item six H, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the twenty twenty PCC patching and meetings program initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the notice was published?
March twentieth, twenty twenty in the Des Moines Register.
Ever received any written comments?
None, your honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that'd like to address the city council on item six H. All right, here and no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, two resolutions and a motion which we can take together and this also came through the Public Services Council Subcommittee.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments on six H? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five yes.
Six I, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Raccoon River Bank stabilization near South Grand Prairie Parkway initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
March twentieth, twenty twenty in the Des Moines Register.
Ever received any written comments?
None, your honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that'd like to address the city council on item six I. All right, here and no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. And again, we have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together and this also came through the Public Services Council Subcommittee.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Is there ever any help that we can get cost-wise from the Army Corps of Engineers at all? I'm not as familiar with riverbank stabilization programs at all, but, or is it just expected that a river running through a city, when it comes to these type of things, it's all up to the city to stabilize their own banks?
This is Brian Hemistat, City Engineer. The reason we had to do this was for, uh, some stream that we had to, um, take out because of a road project. So, this is our mitigation efforts that we have to do to take care of that and it is solely the, uh, um, the city's responsibility or the entity that, that made that change. It's their responsibility to get that done.
Okay, thank you, Brad.
You're welcome.
Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, all in favor of six I, please say aye.
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 Five yes.
Item six J, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the South Eighty-Eight Street and Raccoon River Drive traffic signal initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
March twentieth, twenty twenty in the Des Moines Register.
Ever received any written comments?
None, your honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that'd like to address the counsel on item six J. All right, here and no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. And again, we have, uh, two resolutions and a motion which we can take together and this also came through Public Services Council Subcommittee.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I, I would just ask, you know, how, how timely this is, how quickly we need to do this, just because it was, uh, two hundred and eighty thousand's what we estimated and now we're up at three forty-six. It's not that much higher, but is this something we need to do right away?
Uh, this is Brian Hemistat, City Engineer. There is probably some time, uh, some time crunches on the, on the grant itself, but that's, we'll, we'll get the next project or we'll get this project, uh, let again, um, before that. The, the issue, uh, was we took the paving portion out of this project and put it into the HMA resurfacing, got really good bids on that. So, we think that if we rebid this in the future, kind of after some things kind of settle out here in the next few, uh, um, next few weeks, we'll get better bids because we'll have some, um, we'll have some bidders that normally are the, uh, prime contractors on, on a job like this rather than being a sub. So, they'll wanna take a signal project and, and run with it, so.
Okay, and I, and I, I overlooked that the, uh, motion was to reject all bids, so I'm good with that, thank you, Brian.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right.
Yeah, that, that would need to be a change made on the agenda that, uh, didn't get communicated to me that we were rejecting the bids on that, so.
Okay, so the resolution is to approve the plans and specification, there's a motion to receive and file a report of bids and the res- the final resolution is to reject all bids. Okay, all right, so with those two resolutions and a motion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five yes.
All right. Item six K, this is the time and place for a, uh, public hearing to consider the Thirty-Ninth Street and E.P. True Parkway Hawk Beacon initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
March twentieth, twenty twenty in the Des Moines Register.
Ever received any written comments?
None, your honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that'd like to address the city council on item six K. All right, here and no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, two resolutions and a motion which we can take together and this also came through Public Services Council Subcommittee.
Move approval.
Questions or comments?
I would just say I am extremely grateful that this is occurring because this is, uh, long overdue and I know there are a lot of residents will be very happy to see this go in.
I agree, it's, there's, it's necessary, that's just.
Yep.
The way it is.
Too busy, too busy with street to cross for the kids, so this will be good.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Five yes.
All right, item seven, new business seven A, UTC Delavan Flat of Survey, eleven, eight, eleven, Fourth Street. Create one parcel for transfer of ownership to combine with adjacent property for development of a convenience store, Delavan, Inc. It's a resolution to approve and release the plat of survey and there are no outstanding issues.
I would move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Uh, now where, where this is, is it kind of over by the bus, the bus barn where the school, um, keeps all their buses?
Lynn Tweet, Director of Development Services, no, this is, uh, west of, uh, Old Sully's, UTC Delavan, Fourth Street.
Okay.
At Delavan Drive.
Oh, at Fourth and Grand, okay.
Yes.
Kind of behind that Taco Bell or.
Yeah, I saw Delavan, I thought, I thought Delavan Street, I thought, boy, this is a sensitive area, but, okay.
Not Delavan Drive.
UTC Delavan, not Delavan Drive, gotcha, okay, thank you.
Okay, all in favor of six A, please say aye.
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 Five yes.
Seven B, McKibben Plaza Survey, thirty-eight fifty-five Southeast Arilla Road. Create one parcel for transfer of ownership, Joanne McKibben and Barry McKibben. It's a resolution to approve and release the plat of survey and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Five yes.
All right, item, item eight, there are no items to receive, file, and/or refer. Item nine, other matters, are there any other matters that any council member wants to raise tonight?
I do just wanna bring up one briefly, uh, just to toot our own horn here, on, on four L, um, the rain barrel program and the soil quality restoration reimbursement program. That is a program with, uh, very little money, um, allocated to it, but it's gonna do a lot of, a lot of good for, uh, the environment. And I only bring that up because oftentimes we have people, constituents, that come up to us and say, what does West Des Moines do for the environment? Well, this is one of those things that we do for the environment, we actually do quite a lot, but, uh, I just wanted to point out that this is gonna be a great thing for the environment, uh, and for any of those residents that want to restore their soil or have a rain barrel. So, I, I applaud us on, uh, putting this in place.
Yep.
Uh, this is, and this is Renee. I do have a couple of things. Um, first of all, I think that, um, most of us are now that the West Des Moines Chamber of Commerce has a new CEO who started at interesting times, right? Onboarding during a time where everything was closed, Catherine Harrington. So, I do think that she plans and hopefully, uh, you know, really worked closely with us on a lot of things that we're doing, uh, with businesses and whatnot. So, I think we'll see a lot of connections there, so it might be an opportunity for us to reach out to welcome her, some of you probably already have. But more importantly, I think it's an opportunity to reach out to Carol Chambers, whose last day is April seventh, who will not have an opportunity to have what we really call a big party when we stop over to say congratulatory remarks because of COVID-nineteen. But she has served well in her capacity, I think she brought some innovative programs to the chamber, um, and so, um, I, we all wish her well. I think it'd be opportunity because of the close alliance that we have with the chamber to wish her well. And then on a personal note, I really wanna say this to my fellow folks that are on the call, um, you know, we are more than meetings and more than motions and all of that, we're going through difficult times. So, I just say to each of you and the folks that are out there, particularly our first responders who are putting their lines on, lives on the line, because when, the minute they touch someone, they don't know. We can stay isolated in our own offices at home or wherever, their offices with the people. And so, um, my hearts and prayers go out to them, my hearts and prayers go out to each of you as well, uh, as we all are going through some very difficult times. And make no bones about it, it's a lot of stress involved in that, it's stress involved on our employees and their families and a whole lot of things. And so, I just can't close this meeting without me personally saying to each of you that I pray for you and I pray for your safety and that of our employees and I'm grateful for our employees for putting their names on the line, their lives on the line for, for all that they do. And at some point, maybe we can have some, a video that is made to get up there and say thank you. It's the word thank you for so many people that can't hover at home and still are out there doing their thing, serving West Des Moines, serving our citizens. So, I'm, at some point, I'd like to see if we can get a video message out best we can, think about how creative you can do it, everybody doing their little iPhones and then putting it together to say thank you to all the people in West Des Moines that are keeping this city together. So, I, I really, that was on my heart and mind and I just felt, I just felt compelled to share that.
No, thanks Renee, and I, hopefully we, when we get all by this, maybe we can have some kind of a citywide event, like, like we talked about recently. Uh, hate that we have to go through this, but I can't think of a better city and a better group of people and citizens to go through this with than what, what we have here in our community, so we're fortunate for that.
Hey, uh, Mayor Matt here and Renee, thank you for those comments, I appreciate that. You know, in addition, we're watching the, the daily press briefings, heard a lot of what's happening in Eastern Iowa, with Lynn County and now today here about Washington and Tama County for our long-term care facilities. Obviously, we have plenty of residents here in our city and to the extent that Chief Lou or Chief Scott might be able to comment, I just wanna make sure that, you know, they, uh, you know, have the resources they need and, and, you know, that people are complying with, making sure that, you know, uh, the requirements are being followed, particularly relative to, uh, long-term care facilities.
So, I'll, I'll weigh in, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
So, uh, last week, we had a, one of these meetings with all our long-term care facilities managers, talked them through the process, met with the state, um, we've talked them. One of the good things about our long-term care facilities is if we were to have, uh, COVID start to ramp up in one of those, the state would come in and give us help. Uh, we've also talked to some of our senior living, not assisted living, but some of our senior living places, uh, talked to them, kinda talked them through what's going on. As far as supplies, we're still setting it, I keep getting an update every day of what we're setting with, um, uh, so far, so good, I would say, so far, so good.
Terrific, well, I appreciate that update, uh, and thank you for all that, uh, everybody's doing.
All right, well, with that, we don't have a workshop, uh, or executive session, so, uh, we will adjourn the April sixth council meeting, thanks everyone.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Take care, everybody, be safe.
Yeah, bye-bye, everyone.
Thank you, bye, everybody.
Good night.